Hey, um, thank you everyone for coming tonight to the regular meeting of the Borough Beach Haven, Monday, June 13th, 2020, 2022. It is 6:03. The flag salute led by.
My allegiance to the United States of America, the United Republic, the British Empire, one nation, under God, municipal, liberty, and justice for all.
First going to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in the Beach Haven Municipal Building, on the Beach Haven website, mailing the statement to the Beach Haven Times, the Atbury Park Press, and the Press of Atlantic City. Mr. Allen?
Here.
This is Paul Miller?
Here.
Dr. Davis?
This is Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor Lambert? Cash dispersments in the current fund account for the period of May 1st to May 31st were $3,202,457.23. Cash dispersments in the current fund account for the month of May told $1,119,638.62. The cash balance in the current fund account as of this period totaled $16,362,221.21. Cash receipts in the water utility account for the period of May 1st to May 31st, 2022, were $312,681.37. Cash dispersments in the water utility account for the month of May totaled $78,123,36 cents. Cash balance in the water utility account as of May 31st, 2022 was $4,360,470.55. And I also wanted to give you a quick beach badge revenue report compared to last year. This year so far, ending May 31st, the beach badge revenue sales is at $291,180. That's an increase over last year. Last year's revenue at this point was $285,212. So we are trending above last year. I have minutes for approval without formal reading of April 11th for a regular and executive session, April 28th for an agenda and executive session, May 9th for a regular meeting, May 26th for an agenda meeting, and June 2nd for a special executive session.
So everybody had a chance to read that lengthy list of minutes?
Yes.
Yes. And a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Ordinance 2022-09C, an ordinance amending Chapter 173, solid waste in the Borough Code of the Borough Beach Haven County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, to increase the fees for solid waste and recycling carts. Final reading.
This is the final reading, so if anybody from the public would like to speak on this? Anybody on Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom like to be heard for ordinance 09, solid waste, please raise an electronic hand. Or you can star six to unmute yourself and state your name and address from the record. Seeing none?
Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2022-09C?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-10C, ordinance amending Chapter 173-3, the Borough Code of the Borough Beach Haven, to comply with Ocean County mandates. Final reading.
This once again is the final reading, would anyone from the public like to speak on this? Anyone on Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom wish to be heard for ordinance 10C, Chapter 174? Seeing none?
Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2022-10CTs?
So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-12C, ordinance amending Chapter 101, flood plain management, Section 4, permits, in the Borough Code of the Borough Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, to establish a $25 fee for flood plain development permits. First reading.
This is the first reading, so there is no public comment. If anybody on council would like to discuss this? This is pretty much a standard. The state has pushed down our new stormwater regulations, we do the top of them, since this complies with those new stormwater regulations. I have no comments. Make a motion to approve 2022-12C, please? First reading.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-13C, an ordinance amending Chapter 199, vehicles and traffic, Article 2, parking regulations, in the Borough Code of the Borough Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, to create a no parking area at the end of West Avenue, and to create perpendicular, and to create perpendicular parking. First reading.
This is the first reading, so there is no public comment?
Um, just, I would just also want to make sure that we understand, people do understand that will be time limited parking for these two parking spaces in the established loading zone area from 1:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m.
Yes, it's not a. Two designated spaces.
Right.
Other comments?
I don't have any other comments.
Can I have a motion to approve 2022-13C?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
I'm staying.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
2022-15, uh, I'm sorry, 2022-15 was an ordinance extending the vans for the fire company. I think we're going to administer it and remove that from the agenda. Dan, did you want to just explain for Dan why we're removing?
Sure, we just want to have some further conversation with the fire department as to, is that, that area still needed for them with regard to the building?
I do see the chief on the call, or did you spend having that discussion here, or did you want to have it at our next committee?
I mean, I can speak to him here, too.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see some plans of the fire company, you know, what exactly they would use this space for, and is it permanent? We just need a little bit more detail, so some are visible, some are writing.
Okay. Ordinance 2022-16 is the 2022 salary ordinance, which establishes the pay ranges for employees and officers for 2022. First reading.
So is the, this is the first reading? There's no public comment? Anyone on council like to comment? No? Can I motion to approve 2022-16?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
All matters listed under item consent agenda are considered to be routine by the municipal council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any items requiring expenditure supported by certification of availability of funds, and any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately. All consent agenda items will be reflected in full of minutes. Resolution 124 is returning remaining escrow. 126, reappointing Sherri Mason as registrar of vital statistics for the Borough of the Chaven. 127, reappointing Sherri Mason as municipal clerk of the Borough of the Chaven. 128, returning panel bonds. 129, returning park bonds. 135, awarding a professional services contract to pillar designs for the Beach Haven State Park. 136, approving a contract with People Ready for temporary public works laborers. 137, returning street opening bonds. 138, returning dumpster bonds. 139, refunding performance bonds. 150 is acknowledging a mayor appointment to the library board of trustees. 151 is designating approved curbside pickup parking spaces, current pursuant to 2022-16. 152 is approving membership to the Beach Haven Volunteer Fire Company Number 1 and the New Jersey State Firemen's Association. 155 is rejecting all bids from the June 8th, 2022, for the purchase of the installation of three Milan sirens for the equivalent. 156, authorizing the refund of tax overpayment. And I did add 157, supporting the amendments to the causeway expansion rehabilitation road project.
Would anybody like to plug in on the resolution agenda?
No.
Yeah. I have a motion to approve the resolutions as is.
So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
At this time, we will go through the liquor licenses, we'll do those one at a time, and then G D before we go. Resolution 140, 2022, is granting a liquor license to Tucker's Restaurant Inc. with special conditions.
Would anybody from the public like to comment on this liquor license renewal? Anyone on Zoom as well?
Anyone on Zoom wish to comment to liquor license, or I'm sorry, Resolution 140, for liquor license for Tucker's Restaurant? Can raise an electronic hand. Or you can star six to unmute yourself and state your name and address from the record. Seeing none?
Okay, seeing none. Can I have a motion to approve liquor license 140-2022?
So moved.
Good.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
Resolution 141, 2022, granting a liquor license to Waterfront Restaurants LLC with special conditions.
Would anybody from the public like to comment on this liquor license renewal?
For the.
Yeah, this is for the Blackwell.
No, I'm fine. Anyone on Zoom wish to be heard? Liquor license renewal for Waterfront Restaurants LLC doing business as the Blackwell? Seeing none?
Okay, I have a motion to approve liquor license renewal number 141-2022. So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
Resolution 142, 2022, granting a liquor license to JCPitch Haven Tavern with special conditions.
Would anyone from the public like to comment on this liquor license renewal? This is for purposes of us and Station 117.
Anyone on Zoom for JCPitch Haven Tavern, Buckle Luce, Station 117? Seeing none?
And I have a motion to approve liquor license renewal number 142-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
Resolution 143, 2022, granting a liquor license to Seashell Club Inc. with special conditions.
Would anyone from the public like to make a comment on this liquor license renewal?
Anyone on Zoom wish to be heard for renewal for Seashell Club Inc. with special conditions? Seeing none?
I have a motion to approve liquor license renewal 143-2022.
So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
Resolution 144, 2022, granting a liquor license to Murphy's Market with special conditions.
Is there anyone who would like to make public comment with this liquor license renewal? Would anybody on Zoom?
This is for Murphy's Market.
Murphy's Market.
Seeing none?
Can I please have a motion to approve liquor license renewal number 142-2022? 144, excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
Resolution 145, 2022, granting a liquor license to Don Ronald's Liquor Store with special conditions.
Would anyone like to make public comment on this liquor license renewal? In the room, on Zoom?
Seeing none?
I have a motion to approve liquor license renewal number 145-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
Resolution 146, 2022, granting a liquor license to the Angle Side Inc. with special conditions.
Would anyone in the room like to make public comment on this liquor license renewal? Anybody on Zoom?
Seeing none?
And I have a motion to approve liquor license renewal number 146-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
This is Paul Miller?
Yes.
This is Rutherford?
Yes.
Resolution 147, 2022, with special conditions.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to make public comment on this liquor license renewal?
Uh, good evening, Madam President, members of council. My name is Samuel Real Jr., from the law firm of Helmer, Conley, and Castleman. I appear on behalf of Burden and Betties LLC, the complete ownership of which is sitting in the back of the representative meeting. Um. Sure.
Sorry.
It's a skill set they don't teach in law school.
Thank you.
I've never been accused of not being even heard in the back of the room but for reporting something much different. At any rate, we appear tonight because we have been provided a copy of the draft resolution on the agenda by way of the special conditions, and I believe there are 23. Uh, they are more extensive than conditions that you have either approved or may approve in the next resolution as it relates to your licensees. The first thing I would, I would point out is I'm, I'm sure you're well aware of this, as your counsel, I'm certain is aware, as is your manager. It said special conditions attached to liquor licenses have to relate directly to alcoholic beverages. You cannot use, and you're not permitted to use, special conditions to address essentially some quality of life issues or zoning issues, things that might, we might all think of as site plan type of issues in review. In this particular draft that we've received, you set out a number of special conditions that are of, of much concern. Uh, let me take the, take them, and I, I think the, the order that, that they've popped up, at least when I read through it, the first is, as it relates to the deck. Uh, you currently have in your resolution that live music, which I would understand, I think most of us would understand, to be DJs, karaoke, and bands would be permitted, except you have specifically excluded live bands as a permissible activity on the deck. And as I'm sure your counsel has told you, would tell you, there has to be a basis for having a distinction such as this in your draft, your draft resolution, and there isn't one. There is no distinction between live music, i.e. say a DJ with his or her amplifiers, and a live band, especially when you consider the layout of the deck area at Burden Pettys, which is essentially enclosed on three sides, so that any sound projection that is not hindered by windows or walls is out towards the water, not directed towards any other, what I would characterize as, as any other buildings or accommodations in the, in the immediate neighborhood. So the first thing I would suggest to you is that a limitation that prohibits this licensee from utilizing the services of a live band on the outside deck does not have a real factual basis, and, and we have not been told of a factual basis, and I don't think you, you have found one, other than someone suggests, well, they shouldn't have a band. And some of them may be historical, but this is not the prior ownership, as I think everyone understands. This is a much different ownership group. They approach things much differently, and they have run an operation that is, as they think, and, and I don't think anybody questions, it's a quality asset, as I like to start. So we have a problem with that particular special condition. The second special condition is one that is really concerning in the context of due process and protection. At two places in your draft ordinance, you provide for the closure of either the deck or the inside if there is a bona fide noise complaint that's then verified, and then in the opinion of an officer on a third call out. It's not a question about whether it's a third time in one night, or whether it's a third event over some extended period of time. But the problem is, is that there's no due process rights afforded, and more importantly, this particular facility is located in, I understand, your marine development district, whereas your other licensees that are actually in your multifamily residential neighborhoods do not carry this same, what I would characterize as Thor's hammer. And there is, if there's a need for such a provision, one would suspect that it really needs to be in those licensees that are located within your residential communities and not in your marine district. Now, that's the second component of it. Uh, the third component is the aspect of online ticketing for teen nights. And as I've discussed with your solicitor, you know, in the past, there is no indication that teen nights, which appear to be a particular concern for the governing body, at least as I understand it, um, that online ticketing is going to necessarily solve the problem of youth getting into problems in the community away from Burden Betties. Burden Betties currently offers teen nights one night a week. Notwithstanding their capacity, they have chosen to limit admission to, to 500. And importantly, unlike some of your other licensees, and this isn't casting aspersions on other licensees, but unlike the other licensees in your community, Burden Betties utilizes an outside security company. They don't dress employees up, regular employees up in t-shirts and say, you're security for this night. They rely upon a professional staff that provides a sufficient number of individuals with training, background, and experience to actually handle security, not only for teen nights, but for the rest of the evenings during the summer season when we're all busiest. And that is a marked difference. So right now, your suggestion wasn't, I think there was an event last week or on, on Memorial Day weekend, where there were people that were turned away, and then whether, what were they going to do? Couple of things to remember about teen nights. One, they do give your teens someplace to go and burn off energy, I guess would be a, one way to describe it, in a controlled setting, where there's no alcohol coming in, they're not being served any alcohol, they're not leaving with any alcohol. They're having their IDs checked when they come in, so that there's security as it relates to where a parent's child or guardian's child is going for that period of time. We are essentially providing a place to get them off the streets instead of having them just roam town, which is a problem for a municipality, especially short based municipality in some. So this licensee has already taken steps. What the licensee has also suggested, both previously in correspondence, I believe, to the chief, and as I've represented to, to, to your solicitor, um, an agreement and a willingness not to hold a teen night on a holiday weekend, Memorial Day weekend, July 4th weekend, Labor Day weekend. Why? Because their experience is, is that while they may get a 500 person crowd on those weekends, most weekends, they're not coming close to that 500 people. The other thing that we have suggested, instead of this year jumping right to this online ticketing, when we really don't have a lot of factual information that goes one way or the other, is to see how it would work out by simply saying to the licensee, and it's the licensee's responsibility, and you have noise ordinances that don't require special conditions, that you turn around and you basically say, look, you have a 500 tab. If you look out the door when you've got 500, and you look down the street and you got 200 people, you're going to have to deal with that dispersal. But if you got 50 or 100 people, or 75 people standing in line, that's on you, and your security has to make sure that that line maintains order and some sort of discipline. That's an appropriate type of, of approach to it, and it gives the trained people who are doing your security, they know their job, they're in a position to basically provide order, and I will say to you, anecdotally at least, that when you're dealing with a professional, trained company that provides security, you get an entirely different reaction from a teenage crowd than you do from putting t-shirts on your other employees for those nights. So we don't think you need to go to online ticketing. We also know that people will stand in line, pull out their phones, and order tickets. I mean, that's going to happen. Uh, you're also going to have to have a building of longer time to get people in, because you've got to check IDs, you've got to check it against the, the ticket information. It's going to slow down the process, and that means we're going to have more people queued up outside for a longer period of time. So we think that that's a way to handle the teen nights without getting to a point where it's just either onerous from a operational perspective or a financial perspective by way of increased fees to a licensee, and I might observe that a teen night activity, which doesn't involve alcohol, there's a question about actually whether you could engage in a, in a special condition for that particular event. The, the other, the other question that, that popped up as a, as it relates to conditions was you have in this draft a reference to a form, it's paragraph seven of your ordinance, of your resolution, which talks in terms of, you know, scheduling of weddings, anniversaries, and I think it's directed to trying not to have glassware on the deck. I think that's the, I think that's probably what it's addressed to. And it talks about having a form submitted to the, to the manager, or the manager's designated, if the manager isn't available, but I don't know whether anybody actually has a form. I don't know that, that I've seen a form, if, if there is one, you know, I'm not sure what the process is by way of, um, handling that. The other part that I thought was a little surprising was you have a special condition in here that talks in terms of requiring an acoustical engineer to report. Again, that's not in any of the other retail consumption licensees resolutions as it relates to providing, you know, an acoustical study, even though those other licensees happen to be located in residential zones. So the question really becomes is that it's in there, but it doesn't tell me when I'm supposed to do it, and doesn't tell me what I'm supposed to be doing as it relates to it. Uh, these are, these are, look, they're challenging times for businesses to begin with. You know, coming out of COVID, we're all trying to find some of the new, the new balance and order. We're trying to find things to keep people engaged and, and busy in our communities and not causing other problems. But trying to do these particular special conditions, when some of them legitimately are what I characterize as site plan, you know, especially like noise, queuing, things of that nature, really just don't seem to fit and really serve any particular need in connection with this particular licensee and this particular operation. I mean, for one thing, some of it actually references things that occurred in 1991, or 31 years later. And as your solicitor will tell you, each year, special conditions have to be renewed, and they have to stand on their own. You can't go back historically and, and say, well, 1991, we were doing this, and we'll still do it. What we're asking you to do is to have faith in your licensees, all of them. But this licensee hasn't been before you for administrative charges? They've had no history? We're unaware of any calls for service for disturbances? And we think that, that these conditions, the ones I've highlighted at least, are unnecessary to actually monitor and control alcohol and beverage consumption in Beach Haven, or to impact the quality of life issues that are of concern. Or to impact the quality of life issues that are concerned to you. There may be licensees that that should go down that road. But this is not one. And we'd ask you to strike those conditions from the renewal for twenty-two, twenty-three. I'll answer any questions you have. I have ownership is present, if you want to hear from them, I also have the president of the security company with them. We are here to cooperate and work with you, we're not here to make life difficult for anybody. And if that were the case, we wouldn't be here, we'd just sit back, let you act, and then do what we need to do with train. That's not the way to operate, we all need to get along and work together to make these industries and this community succeed.
I would like to make a statement, um, there was a letter that was submitted to council and to our solicitor. Um, indicating that our, our stipulations are outside what we can do based on the ABC regulations. Um, because related to team specifically. I will tell you that I have, I don't necessarily agree, maybe I could be. Well, otherwise, but. Teen night also works alongside of encouraging parents to come and sit on the deck while alcohol is being served. If your license, you're saying that there's no alcohol being served in the establishment while teen night is going on, that's not true, that's not the case.
I don't think I made that representation, Councilwoman, if I did, I I misspoke, because that's not accurate, no, that's not it.
Oh, okay, well, I mean, that was, that what that is actually been, and this is something I wanted to say earlier, that is something that has been advertised as such. The other thing is, is what I understand as well, is that once teen night is over. There are people who are allowed back into that establishment to continue drinking, so there is alcohol on the premises. Who is making sure that all of those teens have left the building completely? Um, and just to piggyback on what you said about checking IDs, I'm not really sure how you check a twelve through fifteen year old child's ID, because they do not have one. So you're not checking IDs necessarily on that, so.
Well, I can respond to that, there are no twelve or fifteen year olds being admitted to teen night.
Okay, so you.
First off, your own resolution here says in terms of sixteen to twenty. My understanding, and I'll look back, is that we don't allow twenty year olds. Yes, no? Not to teen.
I I guess, I guess my question is, what is the age that you let into this establishment? Because I have, I have children who want to be able to go, and I don't really know what the clear answer is, a teen to me is a thirteen year old. So are you letting thirteen year olds into eighteen year olds?
No.
Okay.
You know, it's a, it's a question of your own, your own particular ordinance, your own resolution talks sixteen to twenty. If I could call on Ms. Magaziner, she can answer the question better than I can.
Sure, but it also relates, and where I disagree with you, it relates to what you're trying to say, that it doesn't relate to the liquor license with teen night, I do believe that it does.
We we can respectfully disagree on that, that's okay.
Melanie Magaziner.
And your address.
Uh.
Where the restaurant is.
Five twenty-nine Dock Road, I don't live there.
Go ahead.
Um, we don't check IDs.
Right.
Um, I do ask my security if someone looks. Over the age of eighteen. To ask for ID, because we do not let, we do not want adults in the room.
Right.
Um, but. There is a question as to if we have to sell tickets online. How do I? Know. Whose ticket it is, because.
That you're speaking specifically to that.
That, that, that's, um. Um, and we only let adults in the room in the nightclub on holiday weekends.
So on your teen nights, you're stating to me that there will not be people coming in after teen night, nor um, nor while on the deck. Inviting people to come and drink.
The deck is open, but we don't open the nightclub, oh, we only have, we only did it Memorial Day weekend, the other. Teen nights on Sundays, we won't open the club afterwards. So not having it on holiday weekends, we won't be opening the inside after.
But the deck will be open.
The deck is open, yes, the deck serves alcohol.
Okay. So that's just what I'm saying, I mean, I, maybe I'm missing here, but I'm just saying, I think that is, that is, that has something to do with the liquor license.
That's, that's why we've got more than two flavors of ice cream. But I think we could say this, if you wanted to revise some of the condition. To basically, to formalize the fact, the nightclub after the teen night is not. Reopen then to what I would characterize as the adult public.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's something, again, this is a licensee that wants to work with you, and again, if we, if we weren't interested, we, we wouldn't be here. We'd let you do what you do, and then we'd just appeal it off to to ABC, get them to stay it, and we'll deal with it next year. We're not trying to do that, it's just not, it's not in anybody's interest.
Okay, uh, I will also like to say that, sorry, um, that, um. Last year, we spoke about this with, um. I believe with Burton Betties, as well as with other place establishments that have teen nights, that we wanted some changes for the new year to come. Um, I don't believe specifically there were any suggestions made, the suggestion that we, the couns- council had come was that we could like to see an online ticketing, thinking that that would keep people from. Queuing for so long, I I do understand you're saying that people will just show up, yes, they show up to concerts, but how are they getting in, I guess they are scalping tickets, but I do believe. I I still do stand by the fact that I think that it would help deter some of the crowd. Maybe, as you said, if you have three hundred people in line and you can fit five hundred, then that's fine, then maybe it's not necessary. I'm willing to work, I'm not trying to be difficult in either, as as you say as well, I'm just trying to make what I see as a community concerns. And just so you know, I also head up the neighborhood watch program, and so I have people who come to me and come to our council saying. These are the things that we're seeing, and so I can't just, I I I can't just listen to one side, I have to hear what my community is saying, and you do a fabulous job of being a part of the community of what you want to do to help. Um, in our community and serving the population, you've made a very nice place, but at the same time, these things are still concerns of our community members, so.
I feel like not having them on holiday weekends is a pretty.
I I agree with you, I do believe that is a.
It's a good amount of.
Good compromise. We didn't get to hear what you said.
You need to step to the.
I I think that not having teen night on holiday weekends is a pretty good compromise in our experience, it's the only nights that we go over capacity. As far as the line's concerned, um, it's only, not over capacity, it's the only time we have to turn people away, so, um. But it it's the only time the line wraps around the building and seems to. Kind of. Conflict with the adults going and onto the deck, it's, um, so. I I. You know, I'd like to say, let's see if it works this year, not having it on holiday weekends, I I. Have, doing the online ticket sales, having experience with it, it's a slow process. And I think it's going to be counterproductive as far as getting the teens in the building faster.
Right, one, like it was stated, is that you can take more time out of your time of being able to serve to your general population by making more arrangements for that. Just trying to say, like, I I I mean, it just takes more time for you guys to have to do that.
It's an extra process, definitely.
Right.
You know, closing up the bars, putting the cages in, the cages that go over the. The bar, not the, not the kids. Uh, yeah, so it's, we we go through pretty big lengths to make sure the room's safe, and no one can get hurt.
I would also like to just say to you, for the community that may not be aware of this, is that Burton Betties has, um, for teen night, has started a shuttle to be able to get children out of town as well, which is really helpful. For a lot of parents and teens that, you know, they don't want to be waiting up until eleven o'clock in the night.
Shuttles for every night, too.
Shuttles for every night, it's really helpful, yes. This is a reserve.
But again, it's, eh eh, what it points to is, is a licensee that's trying to do everything it can to basically make sure people get from point A to point B, have a nice time. Then get from point A B back to point A. Again, without creating trouble, they can't, you know, some people get picked up by Uber. Or Lyft or one of these other. Ride share services, some people, you know, will have a parent or guardian come by and pick them up, some are going to utilize the the shuttle. It it is not the licensee's intent. Basically just open the doors and kick two hundred and fifty to five hundred kids out in the streets. And that's not, that's not what's happening. Already, so that's what I'm saying, I I, I understand what the concerns are, I understand what your neighborhood watch would be interested in. I understand what quality of life issues are up and down the the shore communities in the summer. But. Licensees, whether they be in Beach Haven or Surf City or Point Pleasant. You know, are are not. The sole cause of problems. Sometimes they're not the cause of problems anymore, any at all, like Burton Betties. And and sometimes they can't be the solution for all the problems. They're sort of stuck in the, in the middle, in some respects like you are. They're providing a service, they're trying to deal with summer crowds. The suggested way of moving forward, especially with the teen nights, I I think, and I would suggest and urge you, is reasonable. I think, again, there's, there's really no distinction between live music that you're going to let us have on on the deck. With a DJ versus a band. There isn't a distinction in the context of noise generation, and again. The noise being directed out. Um, and that ties back into the noise and and the security issues. Um, again, it's a licensee that's willing to work with with the municipality. Um, for everybody to be successful. But. In some respects, some of what you want them to do from the lawyer perspective is a little onerous. And I'd ask you to delete those. Thank you.
Can we hear from the chief? So. A couple of these. You named five, I can see definitely amending the acoustical engineer, whoever received one from the acoustical engineers. Okay, so since your time, you haven't received any form, or form of those weddings or anything, okay, so those two are. Hard, okay, and then as far as closing the deck for those various types of. Noise. Number seven? Yeah. Right.
I think it's five. I'm sorry, it's five, five, eight.
But. The two main ones that I'm having problems with are the live bands on the deck and the online for the teen night, so. One of my big concerns last summer was the overflow of the teens into the streets. And teen nights are very difficult for our police officers, we're extremely limited with our, uh, summer officers, it's a very difficult time for a police officer. So these nights are really taxing for our police officers, so we're really looking to them here for the answer, so our solution was the online. Purchasing of tickets. There's a lot of other events for teens that have online tickets, you go to the ski resort, you show your QR code, you don't show ID, it's. You actually do that quicker, so you don't have to wait in line, so our big problem is the line and then the overflow of teens that can't get in, because then they're just left on the street and the mob mentality of adolescence is a problem. For everybody. So, but the solution is just not to have it on holiday weekends, I'm not sure that that's. Necessarily. Going to solve the problem, so. Yes, but I want to ask, I would like to hear the chief.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So. Uh, last year, excuse me if my voice comes in and out, um. Last year specifically, we had, uh, at least three different times when there were problems down at the catch, or at the, uh, at Burton Betties. And what happened was. Uh, more than five hundred kids showed up, they show up hour and a half, two hours prior to the event, because they want to make sure they can get in line. Because they know there's only five hundred people are getting in. So they show up, the line wraps around the building. Um, while that line's wrapped around the building, we're dealing with all of these kids. Um, doing various things, you know, drinking different things in line, which, you know, obviously, we can't. Check that stuff, we we can, uh. Check their bottles, we can't do all that kind of stuff, but they're in line doing that stuff, their flights break out from time to time, security, their security is very helpful, um. They, you know, the firm that they're using is much better than. Uh, some of the places, other places have, so. Um. With that being said, these, the kids will line up. They'll wait in line for an hour and a half. Five hundred will get in, they'll cut off the line, and. You know, there's been a few times where a hundred and fifty, two hundred kids don't get in, and they're very angry that they just waited in line for an hour and a half. Didn't get in, and now they're sent out and to walk throughout the neighborhood to find something to do, because they don't have a ride until. Their parents come back to pick them up, or until they, uh, until their ride comes back. Um, and then they end up damaging. Uh, damaging items throughout the neighborhood, they end up causing a lot of noise. Uh, stuff like that, that we have to deal with, um. The. Other problem is. The the long line around the building, uh, the idea is with this online ticketing that. If, if they do, um. Do an ad saying, you know, if. You go online, if there's no tickets up, you're not coming in. Only five hundred tickets are going to be sold, the kids are going to buy those tickets. That's the five hundred kids that are going to show up to get in the door, and there's no reason to wait for an hour and a half prior to the event happening. They'll be able to walk up ten minutes before, get in line and get in. Um, I don't know a hundred percent if this is going to work, this is the only idea that. That has come up, uh, I, you know, last year. We, uh, we tried to come up with something and, you know, they didn't come up with any better ideas, this was the best idea I could. I could come up with on this, uh. You know, on this topic, so. Um, the. Teen nights are by far busiest nights of the week. We have to have the most officers on. It's the biggest headache for us. See what else is there, uh, the shuttles are awesome, that they have the shuttles down there, that's been a huge help with getting the kids out at the end of the night. Um, that we're just dealing with in the beginning of the night. Uh. The. Comment about the inline longer, I know, um. That it was answered by a mill, uh, that they don't check IDs, um. You know, a lot of the kids that are fourteen, fifteen, sixteen years old don't have IDs, and I do know that they get into the club at fourteen, fifteen, sixteen years old. Um, I I know kids who live in Beach Haven that are that age and have gone in, so. Um. I'm just going through my list here, uh. The deck with the live music, you know, the problem with us with live music going outside deck in that area is there's more houses. In that area than are, than before. Especially with Dock Road being redone. Um, and, um. The condos over there next to, uh. Parker's Garage. Uh. That noise travels. You know, there are some nights, if if the wind is blowing. You know, certain directions. You can hear outside music several blocks away. Uh, and this was done. Uh, for specific reasons at this location, because of, uh, continuous noise complaints from bands being out there, and obviously, this was before they owned it, but. It was this location and this license, not necessarily this licensee. Uh, eh, I I think it would be the same problem. As in the past. And then we'd have to deal with it all summer long. And I think that's about all I had.
What, um, I do, chief of it, so Ms. Magaziner has made a recommendation to not do teen nights just on, uh, on holiday weekends, to start to see how that works, if we. And what are your thoughts on that?
I think, I think that would be a great start, if, uh, if the council wants to hold off on this. Uh. And, you know, see what happens, and if. I I don't, you know, obviously, we can't add something to the liquor licenses later. Um. You know. You know, the only thing I think could be done is, i- if. The next few teen nights are crazy and they're not controlling the people and they're not controlling the lines and. Stuff like that, the only, the only thing to do then would be to pass an ordinance. You know, banning teen nights altogether. Um, I don't, I don't know that that's what we want to do yet, because. Um, teen nights do serve a purpose for the kids, but, uh, they they do also put a drain on the town and the taxpayers and. Police department and everything else.
Thoughts?
Yeah, question, you said there was. You said there were two or three nights last, you know, year, were they the holiday weekend, or were they?
I I, I think one was a holiday weekend, I think one was around the Fourth of July, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I know there was at least three times last summer. Uh, that we had problems with, uh, numbers of kids getting turned away. Uh, Mel, Mel might, Mel might have a better answer to that, but I I don't think it was all the holidays, in fact. Um, this past weekend, when, uh, Mel, or the holiday weekend, Mel had texted me, Miss Magaz- or Miss Magaziner texted me and told me that, uh. They were thinking about not doing teen night. Um. I I not even realized that they were going to do teen night, because. It was a holiday weekend, and I I remember the past owner didn't really do them on holiday weekends, so. That it could help not doing it on holiday weekends and. But if there was, uh, maybe a stipulation that we could put in there that if. Um. You know, they have to do online, online ticketing at the discretion of the police department, and if this, you know, maybe we could put in there. That if it doesn't work out. With these next few things, maybe by August first. If by August first, we're still having problems, then we implement the online ticketing, I don't know, that's just enough. Just an idea, and I don't know if that's something that, uh, they would be in agreement to. But I know one of the other, the other liquor license that has teen night, if his things that. But I know one of the other, the other liquor license that has teen night, if his things that he's implementing don't work. He said that he would be willing to do something along those lines. It's really hard to hear you. I'm sorry.
You, hey, chief, you said you don't want the kids waiting online once we get them in, but we're allowed to have people over there until I think 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM. I mean, can we, if it's not a huge amount of kids, like 25, 50, like we have Memorial Day weekend, can we keep them online and do the one in, one out?
Yeah, as long as the, as long as the line's not under control, out of control, I don't have a problem with something like that. The problem that happened the holiday weekend is from what you explained to me that you turned away 25 kids. Well, that 25 kids somehow turned into 150 kids up at Second in Pennsylvania in the dirt parking lot. Just angry and they had no rides. They were you know, and then it was left for us to deal with that and try to keep them from causing damage, try to keep them quiet because there, there's homes right in that area. You know, I don't, I don't see any problem with, with, you know, a couple come out, a couple go in, but I don't know how often that happens.
I, I really feel like it's holiday weekends that have been not as manageable.
It could be. And the reason the reason why we got to this spot is because last summer we, we noticed we had a problem. We tried to address it. We brought it to your attention. And the very first one this summer, you did on holiday weekend and it was chaos. So
I mean, I felt like, I felt like they were okay online. It was the ones we turned away, which I, I thought I was following your instructions not to let them stay online. Which we probably could have gotten them in with the one in, one out. So maybe it was me being, you know, following the rules.
And I, I know your, your, your capacity is, I believe, 1,000 people, 1,200 people downstairs. But you're, you're letting, you're, you're letting 500 in. And I don't have a problem with you cutting off the line at 500. If 500 is what you can handle, that's what you can handle. I don't. I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to push you past 500 if you're not, that's what you want.
We, we just keep it there because they seem to stay in one spot. They, they, they're like a swarm. To one spot together. So you can't, that spot they go to, you can't, I think that that's a good number.
And I'm not even 100% convinced that this online ticketing would be the solution for it, but it's the only, it's the only thing that we've been able to think of that might stop 800 kids from showing up for teen night that only, the only 500 you're getting in. And maybe the line won't be wrapped around the building while there's adults above the kids drinking. You know, and adults are trying to come in and out of the upstairs bar. You know, having groups of adults and children kind of pushing past each other. And we know how that, we know how that goes sometimes. So I'm just trying to stop the problem. So if you can come up with a solution, I'm open to it.
May I ask the chief a couple of questions? Chief, skip real. I, I represent Burton Betty's. Let me ask you a couple of questions. How many complaints last year were there for adults and kids mixing trying to come and go at Burton Betty's?
Well, I couldn't tell you the number of incidents. We have officers down there and you know, anytime there's any kind of a problem like that, they would just break it up. There wouldn't be an actual calls for service.
I'm not interested in that call for service. I, 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 I understand calls for service. Sometimes it's only going to be a cat entry. It's not going to really turn out to be a call for service. It's just going to be a report in. But my question is, how many were between May 1st of last year and say September 30? How many times were there problems between adults going upstairs and kids on the teen nights downstairs? How many were there?
I would, I would have to take a poll of all my summer officers and ask them how many times they addressed the kids and told them not to be running their mouth to other people. Because what happens is when the adults are walking by and the kids are in line. You know, they people start to vicker back and forth about things. And I, I can tell you personally, I've seen it. I've been down there and seen people do stuff and the officers are just like, hey, cut that out. And it goes away. It's done. So it's not, it's not, I can't tell you a number. I don't. You know, like I said, it's not something that gets reported in the statistics.
Teen nights are a problem throughout the municipality regardless of what licensee you're talking about, correct? Is that what your position is?
They have different, they have different problems. The other, the other licensee has, has a different problem with the line beforehand. They don't have a problem with turning people away. They have a, they allow more capacity inside.
Okay. They're in a residential zone, correct? They're in a residential zoning. They're, they're in the multifamily residential zone, correct?
You'd have to ask somebody on council there about what the margin is.
How many, how many noise complaints were there last year for, for Burton Betty's?
Again, I couldn't tell you that right now. You'd have to, you'd have to get, get with me and I can get you that information, but I don't have a way to look it up right now. And I can tell you, we didn't have, we didn't have any noise complaints for bands on our deck this year because they're not allowed on bands on their deck this year. But you know.
But how many complaints for noise, but, but I, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to understand what the, what the facts are because this governing body can only act on, on the facts as it relates to what is going on. So my question is, is that, okay, as it relates to live bands.
Yes.
Very, very small segment here. Live bands last year, May 1st, September 30. How many noise complaints were received by the police department, acted on by the police department in any form related to noise generation by live bands?
At Burton Betty's or anywhere. Chief answered that. And, and I explained that to you. You, you guys had asked me that before and my answer to that was that we don't have a way to identify noise complaints that were specifically by live bands. And I I can tell you there hasn't been, there wasn't very many. But the ones that were, that we did have, they don't go in our system as live band complaint. So there's no way to search it.
Were summonses issued for those for noise violations?
I couldn't tell you. I had no way to look for it. And I, I know one was.
Against Burton Betty's?
No, not against Burton Betty's.
Okay.
All right. But they don't have a live band outside. So that's why there hasn't been a noise complaint, a noise complaint for live bands outside because they don't have a live band outside.
And none previously. I, I mean, I, chief, I'm just trying to understand what's, what's historical and what's with the current ownership. Would you agree with me that the ownership that currently holds this license is running an operation that is meeting if, if not on the teen night and everything, but is meeting your needs to provide for the security and for the community as a whole? You'd agree with me there, right? This is not a fly by night operation. They're running a pretty good shot.
For certain things, yes.
Okay. But you think they ought to have an online ticketing program?
I do, I do think that that may help for teen night. And obviously if, if we went through something like this and it didn't help anything, then you get rid of it.
Okay. But chief, you understand that putting it in as a special condition means this licensee has to go out and find a program, buy the program, utilize the program, increase costs with no evidence that in fact that you admit there's no guarantee that it's going to work. And well, if it doesn't work, we'll just throw it out next year. So I guess my question to you is this, when you poll other chiefs up and down the shore as it relates to online ticketing, A, have you done that?
The chief is here giving his professional opinion to council. He's not under cross examination. So please refrain from putting him on asking him these questions. He's already answered them. I think we've had enough.
Well, I accept that, but just so I can, and, and I, and I accept it.
All of us have witnessed teen night. We've all been down there with the chief, with the summer officers. Have you ever been down there?
Not on a teen night, no. Okay, I'll, I'll look forward to doing it.
It's quite an experience.
Okay. But on the other hand.
No problem. I'm, I'm not speaking for the rest of council. I have no problem with teen night. We try to find ways to keep these kids occupied, to give them something to do. The problem is the lines. The problem is the overflow. We are trying to come up with a solution. The chief has a solution. We've talked about this solution. The only solution that we can think of are these online ticketing. If it, if it doesn't work, what is the, what is the other solution? We don't have another solution. This happened last summer. This wasn't the first time Memorial Day weekend. This happened three times last summer. We had a meeting a month or two before Memorial Day outlining what we were going to propose. And we said we were going to do online ticketing. Memorial Day happened. It was a nightmare. Now here we are. So we have to have a solution in place for this summer.
I accept that. However, I need the council to understand that if this were to have to be reviewed someplace, there has to be a record. And I'm sure the council understands that. Your solicitor understands that. So I won't ask any more questions because you've asked me not to. I won't. I respect. But, but again, even the chief, even the chief, well, we'd asked for it. We haven't gotten it yet. But the chief has already said to you, I'm not even sure it'll work. I suggest there's that middle step. We take this step, no holidays. The responsibility of policing the line, which addresses the issues that the chief is raising directly. And we don't have to get to the online ticketing at this point. That's, that's my, that's my point.
Okay. So I hear this. So can we talk about the option of trying the middle ground, trying no, no holidays? The next one is July 4th. You'll have a June 26th teen night. You're not having one on July 4th weekend. Sorry. Now that might be. So how many are you going to be having here? So June 26th is your next, is your one Sunday night? And then June, and then July 10th?
Sunday, Sunday the 10th.
And then the 17th, 24th. I mean, can we try a month, see how it goes? And can we put a stipulation in this, in this in that if it doesn't work to the chief's liking that we put in a online ticketing only? And you can use Eventbrite and you can also use, definitely we use a, the Borough. It's not a very expensive thing to utilize. I understand it's time consuming for you all. Forget it. But we do have an issue with teen situation here in town. And, and we also have to respect and we understand what the community is saying to us as well. I don't know if we can come to a compromise on that.
So I know that they had used an online ticketing process before for the, for a couple of the bands that they have had.
Yeah, I bought a ticket online for them.
So I know they had, they, they do know how to use it. And I know in sporting events at, at the schools, even the Southern High School. We had to do an online ticket to go to some of the lacrosse games at the end of the season. And you have the QR code on your phone and literally as you're walking up, you just hold up your phone and all the kids know how to do this. They all did it. They all had their, their online QR code. They walked up and as they walked up in line, the QR code, they just scan it and you keep walking. They don't even stop you. It was, it was even faster than having cash. And, you know, you're not making change. You're not, you know, nobody's counting out anything. It, it's just you, they scanned you as you went by. And I don't, like I said, I don't know what the cost of that is. I don't know if you raised the price of tickets. Or I don't know if the, if the person buying the ticket eats that cost. For lacrosse, the, me buying the ticket, I eat the cost. I think it was a dollar 60. I don't know what the other companies charge. I don't know any, anything about it. But last year we did have a conversation about this with them. And I asked them to look into it. So I mean, this year is, this shouldn't have been a big surprise for this we brought up when we had problems.
And I just for the record would remind you that you do have an option. You do have another option. You always have the options. I'm sure your solicitor will tell you is that you have a licensing authority. You know, you have the ability if circumstances.
Can you speak into the mic?
Sure, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You, you do have the ability as the issuing authority to issue administrative charges and drag a licensee, any licensee in front of you for a hearing as it relates to to the operation, whether in fact it's constituting a nuisance. And then you have a sort of a, a pro forma hearing and you work it out. But you have other options available to you. And it's, it's, I don't know because I.
Where you can have administrative charges and as a result of that you could have special conditions. Either as a settlement or as a discipline that comes.
Yeah, you don't have to suspend.
From a condition or at reasonable time or as a local.
Yeah, you, you get a chance to come back and revisit the special condition as a resolution in lieu of suspend. You, you, you can either, you can suspend or you can do something along the lines of a condition. You can't get money as everybody knows, that's one of the fallacies and the problems under Title 33. But there are other options available to you if the circumstances warrant. So you're not left without options to protect the, the quality of life and address community needs. But I just don't think you're there at this point. That's all.
Maybe this is a public meter too. I think maybe we open it up to the rest of the public. Public in the room first and then we'll go to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom that would like to get in the queue, you could raise your electronic hand and then once we get through some more of the public comment, we can go back to Jimmy, go back to you guys and see where else we dealt with this.
Would anybody ever like to speak on specific?
If my sitting here is a problem.
Well, thank you very much.
No problem.
James Vogel, 528 Doc Road. I not only live on Doc Road, I am a member of the First A Squad. First of all, to address the, the music. It's working. You know, there have been a couple of times that I have called because they went late and whatever, but it's still loud. I'm trying not to, you know, to be a bad neighbor. I think live bands is not going to be a good idea. Second of all, Mrs. Rutherford. I'd like to go back. And you mentioned about the kids getting alcohol and whatever. I can assure you that that does happen. Now, I can go back to the previous owners. And when they had teen night, they cleared the deck first. There were no adults in that building. It was only the teens and that was not a major problem. We respond to many teens who are you know, I mean, the drugs they can't do anything about. But now, and, and, and maybe some of the kids bring their own booze, but I find it hard to believe that you're going to mix adults and teenagers and they're not going to figure out a way to get something to drink. So one other thing that I would like you to consider is Doc Road is a very narrow street. The lines, I mean, yeah, yeah, you'd have to be, the, the, the kids are in the street. I know the security tries to do it. Security can't do it. We're using our special officers as their private security firm to keep these kids out of the street. Second Street is a wider street and perhaps if you could start, start them in on Second Street and then let them wrap around, there would be less of a crowd on Doc, Doc, Doc Road to deal with. Thank you. Deb Witcraft, 528 Doc Road. Jim, and you know, brought up most of the points that I wanted to bring up, but I agree with him and I don't know why the owners don't give serious consideration to having the kids on Second Street rather than Doc Road. Like Jim said, you know, our SLEOs, our, our special law enforcement officers are, you know, there's so many of them down there and the taxpayers shouldn't be footing the bill for so many of our police officers to be down there at Doc Road. I mean, their security firm, I know is very, very good, but they can only do so much. And when you've got cars constantly stopping in the street at Dock and West Avenue to drop off teens, the traffic coming down and coming around, that's the narrowest road in Beach Haven. So why are we not allowing these kids to get into teen night off of Second Street where it is so much wider? And, and easier for cars to navigate when the kids are running in and out from the crowds and not staying on the sidewalk. So I just think that's something that the owners should really give some serious consideration to. There's a lot more people too who live down on Doc Road who are greatly impacted by these crowds and by the, the traffic and by the, you know, the SLEOs that have to move cars along and get these kids out of the street while they're waiting. And, you know, the, the lawyers said, you know, it's COVID tough times and all that. Let me tell you some. The businesses, the bars have never done more business they have in recent years. So, you know, playing the COVID cards, getting really old. They've done very, very well. And Teen Night, although it's a very successful thing, I understand why they don't want to give it up. It's probably a cash business. They pay cash at the door. Yeah, see, if you get 500 people paying $25 at the door, $12,500, any business owner would want to see that money in cash. They don't want people buying tickets online. There's a paper trail of that income. So I mean, there's more to this than, than just, uh, buying tickets online is, would probably save a lot of time, people going into Burden Betty's. They, like the chief said, they've already got the QR code on their phone and, you know, they're good to go. There's just a paper trail on how much income. Maybe that's what they don't want. But I'm just saying that it's a public safety issue and the chief of police is right. And his, um, request that there be online tickets so that when you sell out of the tickets, you know, you tell people the tickets are sold out and that's the way it is, but there's gotta be a way to better manage these crowds of kids and, and the security company can only do so much to, to keep these kids in line on Dock Road. So if they could consider putting the line on Second Street, it would make a lot of people on Dock Road much happier. Thank you.
Let's see if everybody has a chance to speak first.
The chief would probably say that it wasn't a problem with the specific.
Yeah, I just want to let everybody in the public court to speak, speak, and then we can get back to.
Anyone else in the room?
Lori Anderson, 1001 West Avenue, Beach Haven. Um, how many establishments have Teen Night in Beach Haven? Marlin and Burden Betty's. How many in Surf City ship them elsewhere on the island? Anybody?
I'm not familiar with any other establishment.
Where it, eight? None? Um, what was the occupancy of Teen Night at Burden Betty's before it became Burden Betty's, when it was the catch?
I'm not aware of the number.
Would you know?
Mr. Batista advised, I think he said a thousand or 1,200. I don't remember, but I know it was somewhere in that thousand.
That's like terrible. I think 500 is too many, honestly.
And so the Burden Betty's, that's why they're only letting 500 in.
Only 500?
I don't have a problem with that.
Oh, oh my God. So yes, please have the public come out and add their two cents worth. I mean, I just happened to see, oh, Borough meeting tonight. Yeah, I'll go. What's going on? And then when this came up, I thought, holy cow, where's all the people? I don't know. Like you said, we're spending a lot of resources at taxpayer money to keep other people's kids under control. Um, I think maybe kids ought to find, I like kids, um, don't get me wrong, but at, at our expense, we're trying to keep the community safe, number one, and give the kids something to do. Maybe there's, I know you guys have been trying real hard to do it, but it sounds like an awful lot of kids in one little area and the Marlin too. I mean, God, you know, we talked about the cleanliness of the town last year. It looked really, I mean, like the bubble gum all over the streets. They don't even clean their sidewalks and the railings hanging down and I don't know. It's, you have to take care of the town. Not everybody else has kids.
Eileen Boker, 401 Center Street, Holiday Snack Bar. Uh, we've been down here 20 years now and, uh, Teen Night has always had its ups and downs. I, I think recently, because my nieces and nephews have gone, they've done a tremendous job as, as well as they can in the way that parents drop the kids off. I think with the number of kids sometimes at our high school with events like that, you, you could do some online or you could do some pre-sale. And as you're nearing that 500 mark, come up with some type of a system, maybe the blinking sign on the boulevard or, or the, the shuttles that are running to let them know Teen Night is full or Teen Night is sold out. I, I think the one in, one out is fair. I, I see everybody really trying to work together with solutions. It would be a shame to just do away with it. That, that age group, those tweens um, come to this island and, and we know that we love the fact that there's not a boardwalk and, and it's this family climate, but, but the kids look forward to something to do and that Teen Night is a huge tradition for them. I, I would challenge all of us to, to continue to work together to make it safe, make it successful and make it something that we're proud of. And, you know, holding parents accountable might become part of the solution. Maybe they can't just drop the kids in the line. Maybe an adult has to wait with the child. You know, that, that might decrease some of your numbers safely and take some of the burden off of the police officers and the security. You know, look, I've been in public education for a long time. This stuff just falls on the schools, on the towns, and it's really not all of the responsibility of the town or the business owners to take the burden of a few crappy kids. Three calls out of all those nights and of literally thousands of kids, I, I'd say job well done to them. I, I think you go to other areas, other towns on this own island won't do it. Beach Haven does it because we do it well and we communicate and we work together. That's the way we're going to try to do it this summer so that everybody wins. Thank you.
My name is William Barris and I live at 100 Northwest Avenue. Um, I make it a point to speak to all our neighbors on Dock Road. I'd like to know, I know we made a requisition for complaints, but, uh, there's been representations made by others tonight that there are complaints from Dock Road residents. I don't believe that that's the case, but of course we'll find out when you respond to the request that we made. But I can tell you that I speak to all of our neighbors on Dock Road just for that purpose, that we make sure that there are no issues. Thank you.
Any other members of the public who speak?
Hold on, Chris. Hold on, Chris. We have to leave the room first, okay?
You got it.
I'm Eric Magaziner. Uh, 1321 East Mallard Drive. And Matt Harkin, I'm one of the owners of Burden Betty's. Living near the Newington boroughs. Um, I just want to say that the chief keeps representing, you guys keep saying, two or three nights, the three nights. There was two nights last year. A World Day for the Live Week. I know this is for a fact because I'm there every one of them. My wife is there every one of them. Troy's Crew is every one of them. And when it reaches that, that borderline number, it's stressful. So I remember it. We don't love it. And I'd love to keep it under that number. I'm willing to do whatever I have to do to try and make it work. It's just our belief that the online sales will complicate things more than, than the benefit. Um, for that reason, I something like giving us the four weeks to see if we can work a system out that works for us and works for you guys. I'm more than amicable to try. And if it's not working, that gives a little more time to figure out the system, advertise the system and implement the system rather than just, uh, trial by fire. Some of the issues that happened more in Memorial Day Weekend were a direct result of plans that we put into play to try and mitigate those issues. And they in turn seem to make it worse. And we recognize it. And I think we can get here and take one more bite at the apple and see if we can make it a smoother experience. If I have. Thank you.
Okay, Chris, go ahead. You're on Zoom. You can unmute yourselves. State your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, I can do. Um, oh, let's see if my camera will get working in, hold on. Okay, there we go. Hello, my name is Chris Addicks, 408 Second Street. Um, thanks for, uh, thanks for hearing me here. Um, so a cou- a couple of things here, guys. Um, you know, I, I appreciate our neighbors on Dock Street recommending pushing people down second. I'm just going to ask that the council please consider not doing that. I don't think that's a solution to move streets because I would say, well, let's push it on the third, let's push in the center. I think that's a losing battle there. So, um, just like to consider that not, not addressing directly, uh, you know, the neighbors. It was a good idea, but I would just have a different view on that. Um, so just, just in general, on Second Street, um, it's manum. I was down there and again, this is a, a holiday weekend, but trying to sit down on the deck and relax, I saw it was a complete mess. The kids are walking up and down. They were trespassing the house next door. They were fiddling around with a port-a-john, knocking, trying to knock it over while kids were in it. There was an argument on a porch, uh, speeding up and down the street, a lot of noise. And it goes on. And the problem that I had is if it was self-contained to a couple of hours, I'd be okay with that. Okay, I'm, I'm, I understand it. I did buy a place next to some bars. I do expect some noise, but what I'm seeing on Teen Night is not what I see on the adult drinking night, like a Saturday or Friday night. That's controlled. It's quiet. You hear the little noise coming back from the bar. Acceptable, right? But what I'm seeing is an hour, an hour and a half before it starts, all the way through, way after it ends, a lot of noise. I don't know if the online is going to fix the problem, but I don't think that's up to the Borough to solution and solve. I think it's for the venue to figure out how to fix the problem. And we can discuss the legalities of whether it's tied to liquor license or not, but at the end of the day, I think it's being a good neighbor. And right now, I'm not getting that vibe from them that they're being a good neighbor. It sounds like they're doing a lot of things. I'm not sure if the things that they're doing are going to fix the problem. But I, I think that if the Borough doesn't have the leverage with the liquor license, I think looking, having the council think through and review the possibility of putting an order in someplace. Maybe not to stop Teen Nights, but to put some boundaries around it and put some controls in place to help limit them. Support of Teen Night, I just don't think it's the Borough's responsibility to manage it. I don't think it's my money, out of my dollars, tax dollars to pay for special officers on nights like this to control the crowd. And I don't think all the issues are number one, people don't speak up about them because it's like Sunday night. On Sunday night, the last thing I want to do is call Police Department and complain. I'm trying to relax. It's Sunday night, right? Number two, I don't know all the issues are being tied back to the venue and there's no way to really figure that out. It's subjective, right? Number three, um, I just think, um, it's just, just a headache. So I, I do appreciate the conversation here. I do appreciate the comments from the owners. And, but I, I do think more needs to be done. It's that simple. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Margaret Damiani.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi.
Name and address for the record.
Margaret Damiani, 112 West Avenue, Beach Haven.
Okay.
So, uh, my, my biggest complaint, uh, about it is the noise that comes from not even, even if there's not live music. Every night the music plays very loud and the way they built the roofs on the back deck that were supposed to be pergolas. It actually, and they have walls with windows there. The way they have that enclosed up there actually shoots the, um, noise from all the radio or whatever they're playing, the music, even if it's not live music, right out where I can't even, I cannot even hear when I'm sitting out on my deck. Alls I can hear is the music from that, the, and the noise from the people and the music. And that goes on till well past 11 o'clock. And I haven't complained because, you know, my neighbor doesn't really care for me too much, but that's one of my big complaints is the noise that comes from there. That's nightly, nightly depend, you know, it doesn't even matter whether it's Teen Night or not. And the Teen Night is, is, I think one of the solutions maybe for having it be a better situation is maybe to have it start at like four o'clock and end by eight o'clock. That way these kids don't think they're out for a, a night of partying. It'll be a little more subdued. And, and maybe that would help to solve things. And, and again, not having adults in the bar at the same time would help with the, uh, alcohol consumption by the, by the kids. Cause I see them puking by my dumpster and this and that, or peeing behind the dumpster because they, they walk out the door and that's where they end up is in our parking lot. So, or they try to come in and use our bathroom. But, but that's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Barb Kona. Hi, Barb Kona, 100 Northwest Avenue in Beach Haven. Um, I would like to echo what Eileen Boker said. Eileen put it, uh, perfectly when she said parents really need to do their jobs. Uh, this shouldn't fall on the municipalities or the business owners. While I think that maybe this system could be tweaked a little bit, and I'm sure that there, there could be a roundtable discussion amongst people where they could come up with some different ideas. We live in the Marine Commercial District and I can tell you it's not just Teen Night. It's every night of the week during the summer and on weekends preseason and postseason between Center Street and Third Street. It's a huge issue around here. Um, people running stop signs, people out on the street, people pre-gaming in their cars. It's not just the teens, it's adults. I have um, a crime viewing spot from my deck and I watch people sitting in their cars all the time drinking before they go into various restaurants. And, um, I just think that there needs to be a, a police presence, certainly in the area, which I do see all the time. I mean, we see the, the police officers on bicycles and whatnot. I think there are just some, some hot areas in town. I'm sure behind Bay Village and Skinner's Wharf is one and, and this area in particular is another. Um, I don't have any of the answers, but I'm sure that some very bright people can sit down and come up with some possible solutions. That's all. Thank you.
I want to invite people to the Neighborhood Watch Program tomorrow night at 6:00 PM.
Chief, is there any additional that you'd like to add? Um, so for Ms. Witcraft, uh, the line starting on Second Street, if we tried to have a line start on Second Street and wrap it around the building the other way, uh, it would come right up Dock Road. And I think that would be more of a mess. We, I've talked with, uh, Burden Betty's owners when they first came in and we shot a couple of ideas or different ideas around. And, uh, still the Dock Road entry is probably the best area for them if they're going to have that deck open upstairs. If they were going to have, shut down the deck upstairs. Um, you know, may, maybe having a line go a different way might work, but, uh, the way it is, I think they're doing a good job with um, trying to have their security keep the kids up onto the sidewalk and keeping things orderly. Uh, they are doing a good job with some, some of the stuff that we've brought up in the past. The, uh, for Ms. Boker, uh, you know, we, we want, the police department wants to keep Teen Night also. We want, you know, we like Teen Night. We like the fact that it, uh, you know, Bay Village Park isn't, uh, you know, flooded with kids that night a, as bad as it is every other night. It's still, there's still a bunch of kids down there, but it's not as bad on those nights. So it kind of gives that area a little bit of a break. Um, for, uh, Mr. Magaziner said, uh, about the, uh, you know, 500 is a stressful number. Um, I agree. Uh, you know, it is their place. They are, they do have their security that's in there and the 500 is a number that, that they're comfortable with. I, I don't have any problem with, with them cutting that line off at 500. Um, for the hours, I know somebody said something about the hours, having it from, uh, you know, like, uh, earlier in the night, uh, the problem with that's going to be the dinnertime crowd. Usually, uh, Teen Night starts, I, I believe right after dinner, the dinners end. Uh, so I'm sure they wouldn't want to do that any earlier. And the kids don't really want to come out any earlier than that anyway. They want to be out, you know, eight, nine, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock. Um, then, uh, the, uh, the one thing I just wanted to say to the council, if, if we don't do the online ticketing right now, and you, if, if we want to see how it plays out for the rest of the summer, the only thing I would ask is that maybe we, we have the owners stipulate now that, that they will move to this if this summer, if, if we don't, if we have this problem, if we have this continuing problem, that, that they'll move towards this um, with, with less fight than we're having now. Um, I do think that it would work and, uh, you know, it's not only just for the 500 person minimum, it's for the, you know, hour and a half long line that's, that gets there early to try to be one of those 500 people. So that's what I'm, that's what I was hoping for the online ticketing to solve. And to the lawyer, yes, I, I do agree that I don't have any proof that this would work, but nobody else came up with any ideas to, uh, to help mitigate the problem. So, um, that, that's pretty much all I had to say. So, um, that, that's pretty much all I had to say.
Would anybody else in the room like to speak again on this table?
It appears that the licensee is having a discussion with council outside in the hallway. So they might want to come up and say something, and then she give them that opportunity, and then council can be, or if you want to do.
Sorry, I was discussing, I was like, hang on a second. I apologize, I was talking to the ownership.
Again, for the record, Samuel Real Jr., Helmer Conley and Casman on behalf of the licensee. And standing next to me is Ms. Magaziner, uh, one of the members of the LLC. And the, the ownership was discussing some of the issues that have been raised. The, the first thing that, that I think you should realize is that, as the chief said, you know, Dock Street works best in the context of this because we're keeping the adults and the teenagers separate. There is no mixing of the two groups inside. There's no mixing of the two at the entrances or exits. It's done on purpose because we don't want to have the situation where somebody could hand off a drink. Not that security's going to let it anyway. This is the, this is a, and I'm sure as the chief will recognize, you know, it's got to be run as a tight ship internally. And that's the case. If we separate the adults who are up here eating and drinking, and you got the, the teenagers down here where there's no alcohol available and none being served by the licensee. While we can't control if somebody comes in having had a, a beer or something from someplace, that happens. Internally, we're making sure that that doesn't happen. And that's one of the reasons why Dock Street as a, as a point of entry and egress for the teenagers is important because, again, it maintains that separation that we all want. Trust me, the licensee wants it. Why? The licensee doesn't want the problems that go around with a mixing of crowds. So that's the, that's the, the first thing. The second, the second component is this. I, I don't know that the chief's manpower permits it, but this is a licensee that wouldn't be opposed to re, to hiring. They can't go inside, but hiring police officers from the municipality to work outside security. Hiring an officer for teen night to be there. That's something. But I don't think the chief's staffing levels this year would, would permit it. And the only other way is we could go to an outside department from another community. But again, as the chief knows and as the solicitor knows, that can only happen if the chief approves here some other police officer coming in. It, it's a bit of a complicated process. But this is a licensee that is looking to work with you. Now, I, I don't know what else the lawyer can add, Ms. Magaziner has a comment or two further.
I think I have, everyone keeps saying we're not offering anything, and I think I have by eliminating holiday weekends. That's when we have the problems. My husband said Memorial Day weekend, July 4th, the chief said two or three. It was holiday weekends. I also, we put, um, four security guards outside on the line on Memorial Day weekend. And I think the chief will agree that the line was not a problem on Memorial Day weekend. It was the few kids that didn't get in. And then if there's issues with dispersment, we're working on that with the shuttles and trying to get the kids moving as quickly as we can. Online sales are not going to help with that. So I do think that, you know, we're trying, we're trying here, trying to come up with the best solutions. And also, besides Dock Road, keeping them away from the adults, it also goes between two businesses. It doesn't go near any homes where if we went up second, there's not enough room on the other side to go towards the bay. And if we went up second, it would definitely hit homes. But the way we're going now, it goes, there's enough room on that sidewalk and around the side of the building to keep it away from homes. So, and keep it organized. That's it.
Your last words.
No, I only think, yeah, actually, the only comment I was, I apologize, I'm gonna come back to the mic. The only other comment I would make is that keep in mind the Dock Street side, that sidewalk, was actually expanded by Burden Betties at the request of the municipality, even though it's now, you know, it's, it's now part of the sidewalk is in, I guess, in the old right of way, and you lost some parking spaces there. But because municipality said, "We'd like you to have an expanded sidewalk to be able to manage these lines and to manage everything better," this is licensee that did that. No questions asked.
I don't think that's our big concern.
No, but I'm just, I'm just pointing out that this is a licensee that, that could have said no to that and turned around and said, "No, you know, we want to cooperate." Again, we're here to cooperate, not to be adversarial, but these are conditions that we think individually and collectively our owners, they're not really supported by anything factual on the record, and again, we ask you to remove them.
Can I ask just again, because I need to understand this from my own clarity, because I'm not trying to be adversarial myself, but you're saying that we don't want to mix teens with adults and you, because of alcohol. You are serving alcohol at an establishment that has teens at A B C, correct me if I'm wrong, says that we have jurisdiction to decide whether you can have teen night or not because of the fact that you are serving alcohol to people on. If, if you want to have it, great, but don't say that you are not doing it, because you are doing it.
I, I respectfully counselwoman, I thought we addressed that before, and I said, "I'm, I'm not going to argue with you as the, as the, whose interpretation is right or wrong." If we had to go there, it's the director that would decide it. I, I'm not, I'm not stamping up and down on, on that, because I don't think that's the critical issue here. I really don't.
Okay.
So, well, at this point, the council can discuss what you want to do, and I think your options are proceed as presented before you, or make changes to that, and depending on the nature of the changes you may want to make to the special conditions, you might want to have a special meeting rather than waiting until the 30th, but it's a few of your ideas or a change.
Well, I'm not ready to make a decision tonight. There are multiple changes, five different things, and three of them I agree on. So that's something that needs to be edited.
Right, and that's why I meant due to the nature of the changes, we might not want to just do it on the fly here, but either wait until I meet on the 30th or have a special meeting, because that does kind of, kind of close to the renewal date of life.
Yeah, I, I agree that, um, some of the things that should be taken out would be the use of a little engineer, glassware, or more.
Do you have any numbers?
So number eight?
In its entirety, or you just read it? Just write for more.
Just a free structure.
Right, I don't, I mean, a noise complaint is a noise complaint. I don't understand really why all of this other stuff would be necessary. That. I agree.
Number seven.
That one, I believe, and five is, or five.
Five is the deck, music, or the live band.
Hold on, Jamie, you said eight, and then what did you go to next?
Glass.
The glassware? Where about?
Six. Six?
Six.
No, it's six and seven.
Right, but seven is that, that special form. Six is that you can use glassware except for nighttime, except for dinner. Right, so seven, not six.
I'll take one, sorry.
Take it out.
I don't know, but I can have it where.
So let me, so you're, you want to keep six that says, "On the second floor deck, patrons shall be permitted to receive beverages served in glass containers only during normal seated dinner service or while seated at the bar. Any instance, any instance where patrons will be required, stand only plastic or aluminum containers shall be used. During those times, all personnel for Betty shall use all reasonable efforts to prevent patrons from taking glassware containers other than plastic or aluminum onto the second floor deck, except as may be permitted by paragraph seven."
No, I said, "There is a second."
Okay, so the exception.
Right.
So you would have to. Just change the last sentence.
Right, you would have to include in paragraph six, the exception would be a wedding, anniversary, birthday, or similar occasion. Glassware permitted. Yes.
You don't want to have to file forms, right?
Right, there's no need to file a form. You're having a wedding, anniversary, birthday, or similar occasion.
Right.
Let's take use of that.
Yeah, that's under, um, sixteen, number four.
And so you want to continue the little conversation about the teen night and love games.
Yes, I'm not. Are you in favor with the first sub-session for teen night that we proposed regarding the security guards?
Yes.
So that's, "A minimum of six security guards shall be used for the purpose of policing inside and outside. At least four shall be used for outside policing ingress and egress at the start and end of teen night, and then as otherwise needed, inside, outside, and/or in the immediate area of the premises. Two security personnel will remain outside and in the immediate area of the premise from one half hour before teen night until one half hour after closing, and oversee the dispersing of the public in a quiet manner." Uh, yes.
Yes. Right, and the se, and the second one as well.
Teen night establishment shall not permit patrons from obstructing pedestrian traffic on a budding sidewalks. Establishment shall minimize the impact of teen night on the surrounding area.
I mean, I think they're trying to do that as well. That's a yes? Yes.
And then the last one was obviously, "The licensed establishment must establish and utilize an online ticket reservation system. All teen night attendees must present an electronic ticket purchased through an online system for admittance."
I kind of like to talk about, I'm listening on the way. I understand both sides of this, and want to make everybody happy. You know, in a perfect world, we can. I think, as has been said, for teen nights are very busy, not a tremendous day for making the effort. Because as I stated before, these kids don't have anything else to do in town. This is the place to have that safe control. But the problem is, outside is not as controlled as inside. You know, it's been stated that's about the parents' problems, you know, the alphabet burden, the burden of days, and it's taken on the children as well. I think any actions that we can take to mitigate that, I appreciate that they would be willing to undo, you know, not do them on the public weekends. But there's another huge weekend in town that, when I bring them, that's the last weekend in July, of course. That's just as busy, if not more than sometimes, at like four, nursing themselves. And I would reconsider thinking about that one, too. You know, you have a lot of past staff, especially that, I don't think on the team, but was that, following the care of the day. But historically, that's been very busy. I know I received personally a ton of complaints about the Memorial Day. Teen night. One officer was so, I love a hard name, to, 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 and we're just, you know, let's get rid of teen nights, just go back to the drinking. And that's, upset he was that they had to focus their attention on his kids. And they weren't understaffed to the tendency of other problems in the community, because they were already tied up trying to control this group of kids. I think that if we want to institute online ticketing, I think maybe we give them, you know, the next two excluding the holidays, see if it's, you know, going to be containable. Because this year is, from what I've been seeing, busy in the past years. I'm not too sure that it's not going to be five hundred plus kids every night, but I'm willing to take a shot, so maybe it will. But I think, as Eric said, it's, it was a chance to try it, but just after the holidays, you would give them two to report. Continues with the problems that they have to be flexible on to try and do online. But I appreciate they're also trying to disperse some kids, they have four officers, you know, boys and their security guards out of their kind of control. But teenagers are teenagers. I was one, you know, I grew up using the corporate hunt stuff. Now I'm sitting in this chair, it's not a funny thing. Yeah, I was in the catch for teen, you know, it's, I gotta take, how do I catch? So, it's, I would consider, but I think as a council, we've got an obligation to listen to not only the business office, but the community in that area is being impacted by this, too. While I'm rambling, we talked about the live music and that. I was there last weekend. We had dinner, it was very good. And they had a DJ, DJ Mo, I think, doing a, um, a little bit of that. I don't know how live band would be particularly any louder if they were set up responsibly, and if there were some, you know, Burden Betty's, they're delaying some equipment restrictions, so, you know, they can roll up with a soundtrack, you know, roadies and all my thoughts, and stuff like that. But live band on a deck like that, you're not gonna put a seven-piece deck.
And that would be my recommendation or my suggestion, that be a guitar.
To be an orange section. But I don't really see the distinction between the DJ with just as loud.
Yes.
There's no distinction between the acoustic, this guy. Well, there is a band that can play that, but I think that equipment that's accepted for live, that's an option.
So then we go down into what type of live band that is versus item?
That's, oh. As far as what else we could.
That's what I was thinking.
You know, the mainly of the adults and kids, I think, I, I can remember, you know, being up on the deck and being, oh, that's because teen night was started, I knew Mr. Tease that he was only just doing, what, all the time? Twenty-one degrees, so that was even more annoying. I'm not happy Burden Betty's is continuing that, but that was faster. And I never looked for those. But I think outside is going to happen. I don't know where you line up, or you're not gonna have adults and kids. Often, it's, it's, you know, so the adults, that is. And most Jim said, this police officer, the security that Burden Betty's provides, I told him many, many times, hey, you know. I think it's just the nature of the beast, and we get a lot of people together, you're gonna have people that don't agree with each other. Sometimes we feed it, there are ten caverns, and four officers outside, they're not officers, but, uh, security outside. Fortunately, probably some police officer down there, they'll keep that under control. And I do hear that it's not the town's responsibility to police this, it shouldn't do. So it's kind of a, no, that's where, that's kind of where I'm on that one.
Um, those two, I'm kind of the other three, so I would be willing to work with the establishment on seeing how it goes, maybe four weeks, based on a stipulation that chief has talked about, if it doesn't work and there seems to be continuing issues, then you go to make online. I just quickly, briefly, into free service, there's a nominal transaction fee that you can pass on to your teens, and I'll tell you right now, these teens will probably pay it. So just putting that out there. I appreciate the wanting to not do it on holiday weekends, probably would be very beneficial, those are my two thoughts on that. On the other bands, I would like to understand what what kind of band you are talking about, because I too was at Burton Buddies a couple of weeks ago. And the DJ was playing, and I was sitting at the bar with friends, and I had a hard time even talking while I was sitting there. So it is loud, I think maybe an acoustic guitarist or something of that nature would be even better than Mr. DJ Mowbray, so those are my thoughts.
Well, what would live, live music be, live music, that's just not a band, live music be?
It's a great area.
Live music should not be a band, so in my, in our discussions, we were saying that, you know, two or, you know, duet or.
Right.
Just small group, as soon as it's. We would have two, we'd become a band, right?
Right.
We should define it, that's what they're asking.
I would rather be acoustic live music and no DJ.
Right.
I would like acoustic, low.
Honestly, me too, everyone.
Yeah, I know, I, I appreciate that. I mean, people are coming here for vacation, they want to do that kind of stuff, the teens love that kind of music, I I I appreciate the challenge that you're being placed in as well, so.
Okay, so it sounds to me like you're not going to be moving forward on a resolution.
No, I think the proposed revisions are significant enough that Sherry and I will have to work on some language, and we'll bring it back to you, whether you have a special meeting sometime, you can have on the 30th.
Okay.
To council, if you want to wait until the 30th, it just seems like it's kind of.
Yeah, I agree, that's fun.
And that also gives. A teen night, which means then and now.
And we're going to go on this, or is there?
Yeah, no, I mean, a lot of chances, so yeah.
Okay, so we'll move on to resolution 149, 2022, granting a liquor license to the Marlin and Tuna Club with special conditions.
Would anybody in the room like to speak on the liquor license renewal 149, 2022, the Marlin Tuna Club? Anyone in the room, anyone on Zoom? Seeing none. Connect these other motion for the liquor license renewal 149, 2022.
So moved.
Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ballmiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yeah.
I have a bill that's receiving the amount of $1,440,096.60.
Has everyone had a chance to read the bills, does anybody have any questions or concerns about the bills?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the bills, please?
So moved.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yeah.
Nice. I know.